All right, good afternoon and welcome everyone. I will now talk to order the February 27, 2025, meeting of the Policy Management Committee. I'm very excited to be here. This is my first time running the committee meeting for this particular committee. So first, I would like to give my colleagues a moment to introduce themselves. I'll start from my left and then I'll go online.
Carla Silvestri, School Board Member at Large.
Brenda?
Good afternoon, Brenda Wolf, District 5.
And I'm Julie Yang of District 3. Our student member of the board is trying to get here. He's at Annapolis advocating on behalf of the school system. All right, so next, I would like to ask my colleagues if there are any questions or concerns regarding the informational summary of the last meeting on November 14, 2024.
Given that this is my first meeting, where would I find the informational summary? Is that on Board Docs? And when was that posted? Just so that I know the cycle. I didn't look at it, so I don't have any questions.
Thank you. So in the future, it might be helpful when it's a late posting to have it at the table. Thank you, staff. All right, Ms. Wolf, do you have any questions?
No, because it was a late posting. I hadn't seen it either.
So in that case, then, if there's any questions, please follow up with me. Thank you so much. Okay, so today, we are reviewing two policy items, and it's Policy GCB Investigation of Allegations of Employee Misconduct, and we'll hear an update on the public comments received and the resulting amendments. And we are also going to look at Policy GAA Positive Work Environment in a Self-Renewing Organization. And that is also an update on public comments received and resulting amendments. Today, the committee is also receiving an item of information on MCPS regulation, which has been approved by the Superintendent's Office since the committee's last meeting. So with that overview, I would like to turn it over to the staff. First, introduce yourself, and then let's get on with the agenda.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Yang, Ms. Wolf, Mrs. Silvestri. My name is Leslie Turner Percival. I'm a Legal Director in the Office of General Counsel.
Good afternoon, and good afternoon to Ms. Yang, Ms. Silvestri, and Ms. Wolf. I am Sally Davis, Supervisor of Policy and Regulations in the Office of the General Counsel.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Yang, Mrs. Silvestri, and Ms. Wolf. My name is Jessica Boone. I am the Director in the Department of Compliance and Investigations.
And good afternoon, my name is James Kustos. I'm an Acting Director in the Department of Compliance and Investigations.
Thank you. Thank you. We can move to the first policy.
Yes, thank you. So as you mentioned, Ms. Yang, the purpose of today's presentation is to present comments received about draft policy GCB Investigation of Allegations of Employee Misconduct, and also to recommend updates to the draft based on these comments. After hearing and discussing these recommendations, the committee will be asked to consider moving draft policy GCB to the full board for final action and approval. For the first part of this discussion, let me orient you to two documents in your packet for Policy GCB, the five-page draft policy marked "Response to Public Comments," and the 17-page stakeholder engagement summary, which includes major themes from the comments, outreach contacts, and all comments received. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kustos to begin.
Thank you so much, Leslie, and good afternoon, Ms. Yang, Ms. Silvestri, and Ms. Wolf. If I could, I'd like you to turn to first the draft policy lines 12 through 15. The charge we were given was to establish the core principles guiding investigations. And as we review the changes we're recommending, you'll notice that we recommend that the purpose of the policy remain the same. I say this because there were comments about how the investigation findings would be used, how employees should be disciplined as a result of the findings, and other comments that actually fall outside the scope of establishing the guiding principles for conducting investigations.
All right. Good afternoon and welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the February 27, 2025, meeting of the Policy Management Committee. I'm very excited to be here. This is my first time running the committee meeting for this particular committee. So first, I would like to give my colleagues a moment to introduce themselves. I'll start from my left and then I'll go online.
Good afternoon, everyone. Carla Silvestri, School Board Member at Large.
Brenda?
Good afternoon. Brenda Wolf, District Five.
And I'm Julie Yang of District Three. Our student member of the board is trying to get here. He's at Annapolis advocating on behalf of the school system. All right. So next, I would like to ask my colleagues if there are any questions or concerns regarding the informational summary of the last meeting on November 14, 2024.
Given that this is my first meeting, where would I find the informational summary? Is that on Board Docs? And when was that posted? Just so that I know the cycle. I didn't look at it, so I don't have any questions. Thank you.
So in the future, it might be helpful when it's a late posting to have it at the table. Thank you, staff. All right. Ms. Wolf, do you have any questions?
No, because it was a late posting. I hadn't seen it either.
So in that case, then, if there's any questions, please follow up with me. Thank you so much. Okay, so today we are reviewing two policy items. And it's Policy GCB Investigation of Allegations of Employee Misconduct. And we'll hear an update on the public comments received and the resulting amendments. And we are also going to look at Policy GAA Positive Work Environment in a Self-Renewing Organization. And that is also an update on public comments received and resulting amendments. Today, the committee is also receiving an item of information on MCPS regulation, which had been approved by the Superintendent's Office since the committee's last meeting. So with that overview, I would like to turn it over to the staff. First introduce yourself and then let's get on with the agenda.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Yang, Ms. Wolf, Mrs. Silvestri. My name is Leslie Turner Percival. I'm a Legal Director in the Office of General Counsel.
Good afternoon, and good afternoon to Ms. Yang, and Ms. Silvestri, and Ms. Wolf. I am Sally Davis, Supervisor of Policy and Regulations in the Office of the General Counsel.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Yang, Mrs. Silvestri, and Ms. Wolf. My name is Jessica Boone. I am the Director in the Department of Compliance and Investigations.
And good afternoon. My name is James Koutzos. I'm an Acting Director in the Department of Compliance and Investigations.
Thank you. Thank you. We can move to the first policy.
Yes, thank you. So as you mentioned, Ms. Yang, the purpose of today's presentation is to present comments received about draft policy GCB Investigation of Allegations of Employee Misconduct, and also to recommend updates to the draft based on these comments. After hearing and discussing these recommendations, the committee will be asked to consider moving draft policy GCB to the full board for final action and approval. For the first part of this discussion, let me orient you to two documents in your packet for Policy GCB. The five-page draft policy marked Response to Public Comments, and the 17-page Stakeholder Engagement Summary, which includes major themes from the comments, outreach contacts, and all comments received. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Koutzos to begin.
Thank you so much, Leslie, and good afternoon, Ms. Yang, Ms. Silvestri, and Ms. Wolf. If I could, I'd like you to turn to first the draft policy lines 12 through 15. The charge we were given was to establish the core principles guiding investigations. And as we review the changes we're recommending, you'll notice that we recommend that the purpose of the policy remain the same. I say this because there were comments about how the investigation findings would be used, how employees should be disciplined as a result of the findings, and other comments that actually fall outside the scope of establishing the guiding principles for conducting investigations. We recommend that the policy remain focused on the purpose of investigations: to establish key facts, to address gaps in the evidence, and to resolve omissions or inconsistencies in such evidence. It would be helpful at this point if you could also have the second document in your packet available, the Policy GCB Stakeholder Engagement Summary. We saw four themes that needed to be addressed with respect to the conduct of investigations, and we have recommended a number of updates in response. These themes were, first, the need for regulations and administrative procedures, and we have added language to require the superintendent to establish regulations and thorough administrative procedures for consistent implementation of this policy, and for the superintendent to review and update the procedures annually. And that's found on lines 61 through 63 of the draft policy. Second, timelines. New language requires the superintendent to establish timelines, and that can be found on lines 138 through 139, with the understanding that when an external agency has taken the lead in an investigation, MCPS may not begin an internal investigation until that external agency has concluded their investigation. MCPS cannot risk interfering with or jeopardizing an external investigation. We will come back to that point in a moment, but let me address the other two themes in the comments about investigation procedures. Third, addressing conflict of interest. When there is a potential conflict of interest, an employee has three ways to disclose that conflict of interest. First, to their supervisor, but there may be situations when the supervisor may not be an appropriate person with whom to be discussing the case. The second possibility is the chief of the Office of Human Resources and Development, or third, to the board ethics officer as set forth in the board's ethics policy. And finally, in terms of themes, training and certification. The policy intentionally states that the investigation unit as a whole needs to have a balanced portfolio of expertise and to receive ongoing professional development, and that can be found in lines 110 through 116. Past experience has shown that the investigation unit needs an array of expertise. Turning next to appeals, in response to comments, we recommend the board establish the essential components of an appeal process in Policy GCB and assign responsibility to the superintendent to establish and annually publish procedures for appealing the findings of an internal MCPS investigations. And that information is within lines 159 through 176. Now I'd like to turn it over to my DCI co-director, Ms. Jessica Boone.
Good afternoon again, Ms. Yang and members of the committee. In response to the board members' comments, we recommend expanding reference to retaliation with a more complete statement of Maryland whistleblower law. As you are aware, the Maryland whistleblower law states that a public school employer may not take or refuse to take any personnel action as reprisal for reporting misconduct, providing information, or testifying against or testifying about misconduct, or refusing to participate in misconduct. We have included the exact language in the updated policy draft. For your information, in reference in the related entries, there are two MCPS regulations in the Employee Code of Conduct that also reference whistleblower law and state whistleblower law and state that employees found to have engaged in reprisal will be subject to disciplinary action. I would also like to address the comments we received about data security. We recommend additional language requiring a secured case tracking system with appropriate access, use, and disclosure protocols to preserve internal work product of the investigation and to adhere to all legal obligations regarding the confidentiality and appropriate disclosure of student and employee information in accordance with federal and state law. And that can be found in the draft policy line 77 through 87. And I can assure the committee that the Guardian system that went online last June does precisely that. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Sally.
Thank you, Jessica. I'd like to turn now to Mr. Koutzos's earlier comment about external agencies. So in response to comment, we recommended additional language that expands what had previously been coordinate with external agencies and specifically establish a mechanism through which this will and does occur. So new language requires MCPS to establish and regularly update memorandum of understanding with law enforcement and set forth the categories of allegations for which law enforcement is responsible. For example, these clearly state in our existing memorandum the types of responses that will be handed by Child Welfare Services, Child Protective Services, and the Adult Protective Services for vulnerable adults in compliance with mandatory reporting law. Further, we've added the statement that MCPS fully cooperates with law enforcement and that internal MCPS investigations may not interfere or jeopardize external investigations. So we do not recommend a list of categories of offenses in this policy for which external agencies will be involved. So at this point, Mrs. Yang, I defer to you and whether you would like me to walk through the policy further, line by line, or pause now for your discussion.
I think I would like to go for discussion because the line and not by line is very clearly listed in our packet. So I'm going to turn to my colleagues. I see Ms. Wolf's hands up. And Ms. Wolf, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for the work that you all have been doing on this. I know it's been a long journey. I have a couple of questions, questions and comments. Hold on. On the stake, I'm looking at the responses, stakeholder responses. And I am on page four. Okay, it says, "The policy doesn't address communication protocols with accused employees." Is this because that is contractual? It's in the agreement?
Ms. Wolf, when you say page four, it's the stakeholder engagement?
Stakeholder Engagement Summary, yes.
Okay.
My question is, I looked at what you all responded, recommended notifying that they're all under investigation if the employer is accused of misconduct, they're notified. And I was wondering, where do you find that information? Is that contractual?
So I'm not sure if I can reference it as contractual, but I will say that throughout the investigative process, we collaborate with the employee associations to ensure that there are effective communication protocols. In fact, from the start of an investigation, we provide the staff member who's alleged to be involved in any particular misconduct or violation of the Employee Code of Conduct a resource document with contact information for their employee association, and then work and collaborate both with the employee and with that association representative through every stage of the investigative process.
Okay, so my question then would be, since you're not exactly sure, it's in the contract, and you can't point to me where I would go to know that I have that right, other than you're saying it right here. Is there a real problem with putting that in the policy? Some reference to what the protocol is?
I don't know that there would be a problem of putting it into the policy, per se. I don't know how deeply we would go into describing those protocols as regulations typically address things that have greater specificity in terms of process and procedure.
Well, you know, I was just going to say a reference to the regulation and put it in the regulation.
Yeah, that could be the potential follow-up because I believe at this point, we're in the, as you know, the policy development stage and the regulation stage could follow with that specific information.
That's fine. I just want to know, can you reference it in the policy? Not put in all of the jargon that you would need, but just reference the regulation on it.
Helpful information.
Okay, now, my next question is, you have to excuse me if you're hearing stuff. I'm over at Fairland for their program this evening, and so I'm doing the policy meeting from there. I'm on page five now of the summary. And one of the comments was implement regular audits of completed investigations. And so you all referenced the right to privacy, and I understand all that. But since the board has an audit unit, is there really a problem with actually doing some sort of sampling to look at, to be able to be sure that the process is being followed?
I don't see any reason or rationale why there should not necessarily be some type of audit procedure that we could engage around. I do think it would have to be taking into consideration whatever confidentiality, legal obligations that we have as a system to employees and their employee personnel records. But the good news about the Guardian Case Management System is that it does keep significant data on our processes, the timelines associated with investigations, and how we move through those processes. And so I think internally, there could be structures that are built into a potential audit that reviews that data and discusses any general trends associated with the investigative process.
Yeah, I'm only looking for trends. I'm not interested in names, schools, anything. I'm looking to see, well, we did this many investigations on this, and the procedure was followed in 70% of them, but there was a deviation, that kind of thing. So that if there's something going on, that we would be able to pick it up.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent recommendation and one for us to consider as we move forward with this policy, I would agree.
Okay, and moving on, my next comment or question is, I would really like to see, and you can tell me that you don't think that this is doable, some reference in here that certain types of cases will be reviewed by the Office of General Counsel before a decision is issued. I mean, cases that lead to termination in particular.
Yeah, so we do have a review of certain cases that do go through the General Counsel, depending on what the type of allegation and the type of disciplinary action that we think will come as a result of the investigation.
And where do I find that information?
So this is something that, an agreement that we have with the General Counsel, that they've asked to review certain cases for certain types of allegations.
But to this point, we have not codified it. Sorry, Ms. Wolf, to interrupt. We have not codified it through policy. It's really been a practice and a procedure that we've engaged directly with the Office of General Counsel around. And so if there's a recommendation or desire to include it in the policy, that obviously could take into consideration. But there are, I guess, some practices and procedures that may be best for regulation or for internal working. But I'll yield to the board and others on that decision.
I don't care really whether you put it in the regulation or the policy. I just believe that there is a certain level of case that requires OGC review and that that ought to be known so that the public could find a document that tells them that.
Understood. We will absolutely note that and go back to the table and review.
Okay, and I have another question, and again, I'm not sure how I feel about this. But in the appeals section, you go in pretty deep and you actually, I think, and maybe I'm wrong, give number two, direct engagement of hearing officer assigned to review them. I'm not sure that we assign a hearing officer in every appeal. So I'm wondering if it might be better to replace the language with something to the effect that decisions of the superintendent may be appealed in accordance with Education Article Sections 4-205(c) or 6202 as applicable, which covers the appeals process.
That we can do. We agree.
Okay, and I think I have one other little thing. I can't find it now, but it had to do with complainants being complainants. Hold on. I think it was, okay, go back to the summary. So I'm page four, the first one. What can a complainant do if their complaint isn't taken seriously or investigated adequately? Well, they may have repercussions outside the system, but I don't know that they're entitled to anything. The accused is entitled to take an appeal, but I don't know that the complainant is, once an investigation has decided that there's no problem.
I think you make a very good point, and I think if we're talking about employee misconduct investigations, then, you know, that isn't necessarily something that is brought back to or divulged back to a complainant because of the confidentiality of a personnel record and that process. But I think that complainants have been able to access or utilize other means to report a concern, whether it's through Lighthouse, whether it's through Safe Schools, or other options to express the concern that they may feel did not get the attention that they had hoped it would receive based on their understanding of the situation. But I think it's important for our processes to be respectful of the confidentiality laws and expectations and obligations that MCPS have to a confidential personnel record.
And that's kind of what I felt, but this seemed to give the complainant, for which a decision had been made, that there's no problem, some sort of right. And they may have rights, but I don't know that it's to take an appeal because they feel it's been an inadequate investigation because they're not seeing the investigative report, are they?
No, that is not something that is shared with the complainant, and it is not something that is, in essence, open to that review or that type of review process.
Well, I just want you to take a look at that. That's a little bit disturbing to me, the way I'm interpreting what you're saying there. And lastly, I just think number four in the policy itself, two, no, three, it's under three, no, it's under number four. This whistleblower law, I just think the sentence reads a little awkward to me. It says, "may not take or refuse to take any personnel action as reprisal against an MCPS." I had to read that a couple of times. I don't know if you could... A little clearer.
We could. We could just reference the whistleblower law, or we could quote it. But that is pretty much the state's language. So we could shorten it.
Well, if it's the language out of the state, leave it, but it's a little bit awkward to me, the way it's written.
No, you're right, because retaliation reprisal, you know, we're crossing words. We've been using retaliation in most of our regulations. But if it is simpler to just say, or not simpler, but if it's less confusing, to leave lines 45 to 47 and cut 48 to 57, we could certainly do that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Any other questions from Ms. Silvestri?
Mr. Koutzos, you mentioned our ethics officer. And I just wanted to, for the viewing public, that person is the board's Assistant Chief of Staff. So I thought, okay, where in the work chart is that person? Oh, no, it's someone who has other job responsibilities. Just make a note of that. Again, back to line 45. Ms. Wolf already pointed out that it's complicated language, and it's the state's language. But is it, can we, or is it necessary, could we say MCPS or its employees, to be more specific?
Right. The way the law reads is public school employer, and it kind of would follow people who are then designated to do jobs down the line. So we could say that, yeah. What is the wording you'd like to see?
Just MCPS or its employees.
Okay.
And then line 73, that B item is, I don't want to... And then line seventy-three, that B item is, I, I don't understand what that says. Investigation of all complaints that pursues anonymous complaints with the same procedures and thoroughness as those in which the complainant identifies themselves based on all relevant information available.
Okay, it starts with the, the stem. There will be a case management process to include investigation of all complaints. Now, you're right, there's a lot of words there. But the point is that anonymous complaints will be reviewed with the same procedures as non-anonymous complaints. If you would like that simplified, we can take a crack at that.
Put it through ChatGPT, it's a plain language, some plain language, English, please. Just a little technical thing, I think on line one twenty-eight, you have an extra and. Participating in an investigation and, but you added an and in three I. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, so I understand currently we have, um, we do investigation, and we have processes and procedures, and we are developing a policy. Now, according to this policy, we are going to, the superintendent need to develop a regulation, and that need to be renewed annually. So can you, um, can you kind of let us know in terms for us to do that? What's the timeline we are really looking at?
James, you want me to take that?
Please.
So what we intended to say was that there would be regulation and procedures, and that the procedures would be updated annually. So that would be a staff review of the procedures, and, you know, editing is appropriate for all the changes in office and new procedures. So that was the intention, that it would not be the regulations, but the procedures that are reviewed annually.
It would be the procedures that, but right now, do we have the regulations?
We do not have an investigations regulation that will follow this work.
Yeah, so my, my question is, if you have to project, uh, like predict, how, when, what, how long will you take to develop that regulation, a timeline?
Sure, so the procedures exist, and so that is already established. By June, we will have a policy, we hope, as you do too. So then we can begin working on the regulation. If you would like a forecasted time, and, you know, we get some sense of expedite or not, we could certainly put it together by the winter.
Okay, that's good to know, that's good to know, because this is a very important work. I don't want us to lose the momentum, we need to keep going and get it done, right? My second question is about the timeline. So one of the things, as board member, we see is we, 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 we understand the case law, and then we also understand the financial burden on the school system when an employee is under investigation, okay? Currently, I understand each case is, is different, so the timeline might be different. But currently, doing, in this policy, is there place address timeline issues?
I think that's an excellent question, and one of the things that our office engaged around when Ms. Boone and I came last April, was through the course of the summer, we really analyzed our data to look at the timelines and durations that had existed with previous cases, and what we were also seeing in our current workload. And we made the determination after that data review that once we have control of the investigation, after an external investigation, if it's applicable, is concluded, and we are now conducting the investigation in DCI, that there should be a maximum of thirty to forty-five days that an investigation should be completed. And Ms. Yang, I want to reiterate what you said. Every case is unique and different, and sometimes there are new, there's new information or new evidence introduced through the course of the investigation that may expand or retract the timeline. But one of the benefits of the Guardian Case Management System is it helps us track and monitor the timeline for cases, and we are engaging with our coordinators and investigators once a case hits the thirty-day mark, to find out, are there barriers that we need to remove? Are there things that you, you need as an investigator so that we can include and close this at the forty-five day mark? Then we work collaboratively with the employee involved, as well as that employee's association representative, to ensure that we're scheduling and respecting their availability when producing or moving forward with decisions on the investigation.
And if I could just add one thing to that, we have, in regulations such as KLA RA, we have laid out, the goal is forty-five workdays, for example, that's what the, the statement is there, with a provision that if it is very complex, there's an assessment at the thirty-day mark, you're going to need more time.
Okay, so it's codified in our...
That's what we would put in a reg.
Okay, okay, so that, that's wonderful, I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that, we will codify that. And, and also for, for employee and every party involved, a, a long time is stressful and, and, and difficult, okay. I, I don't have any further questions, I'm going to look around my colleague to see if there are any other concerns. If there is none, may I have a motion to, so that we can let the whole board see this work?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous with those present, thank you. We can move on to the next policy.
Okay, next we are bringing draft policy GAA, Workforce Excellence, to present comments received and recommend updates to the draft based on these comments. And after hearing and discussing these recommendations, the committee will be asked to consider moving draft policy GAA to the full board for final action and approval. We will be discussing two documents in your packet for policy GAA, the seven-page draft policy marked in response to public comments, and the twenty-three-page stakeholder engagement summary, which includes major themes, outreach contacts, and all comments received, both through in-focus groups and through the public comment page. Let me turn it over to Sally.
Okay, so when the board took tentative action on policy GAA, we discussed several things, one of which is retitling the policy to Workforce Excellence. It is kind of an artifact of our process that we leave a name on something until you officially take final action to change a title. So, but we, we recommend a change to Workforce Excellence, and we, we discussed at that point the board's core purpose statement that students are the center of our work, and we provided a substantially revamped policy that supports the success of students with workforce excellence. So, policy GAA was re-envisioned to emphasize workforce excellence as a requisite for student success, and to simultaneously recognize that all employees play a direct and indirect role in students' successes. So we discuss the importance of policy GAA for clearly articulating board values that you expect all employees to experience in the context of an MCPS professional growth system. And we laid out the three interconnected functions of a professional growth system that, one, provides for onboarding, role-specific skills, learning-focused evaluation that keeps our employees' skills sharp for the jobs they have now. Secondly, looking ahead to the many ways employees can move into greater areas of responsibility and leadership with professional learning and opportunities for career advancement, to draw out their professional interests and leadership potential, and to retain our talent. And then, third, should it become necessary, a structure that fairly and effectively responds when employee performance is falling short of required competencies, and supports employees and intervenes effectively. So we recommend keeping the policy focused on these three essential functions of a professional growth system. And in response to public comments, we've added some clarifying language to the purpose section to lay out, these are the three functions of a professional growth system. And now I'm going to turn to Ms. April Key, Chief of the Office of Human Resources Development. Ms. Key?
Thank you, Sally. Good afternoon, Ms. Yang, Ms. Sylvester, and Ms. Wolf. Let's talk about onboarding. There are a number of comments about onboarding new employees for which we've recommended expanded language about the need for all employees to be welcomed and prepared for success with role-specific knowledge, as well as training on system-wide compliance requirements. This is in lines ninety to ninety-four. "We do not recommend calling out any one job position, but recommend a continued focus on all employees." Specifically about professional learning, we received comments asking for balance between role-specific learning and required compliance training, such as the annual training we require of all employees about mandatory reporting requirements. Also, lines one thirty to one thirty-three. "The importance of employee feedback about the content, design, and relevance of the professional learning we provide or require." We've responded with updates. "We heard in our focus groups that an employee's immediate supervisor is the day-to-day face of the professional growth system. It is their job to provide routine support, supervision, and learning-focused evaluation essential to workforce excellence." "In response to comments, we recommend a clear statement that there shall be a shared responsibility across MCPS leadership and supervisors and all MCPS schools and offices for timely and effective professional learning, support, and evaluation." That would be lines seventy-seven through seventy-nine. "The last update I'll highlight is the close connection between the Professional Growth System and the Employee Assistance Program. Commenters raise the importance of supervisors getting the support they need to do this work of providing learning-focused supervision and ongoing feedback to staff. And so we recommend additional language about the importance of professional learning to foster supervisors' leadership skills and support supervisors' well-being." That's, well, in lines eighty-three to eighty-seven. "The last update I'll highlight is the language recommended about how the Employee Assistance Program supports the Professional Growth System. It is an important source, resource, I'm sorry, for nurturing employee well-being, and it enhances workforce collaboration by addressing concerns that may manifest in the workplace with prompt and effective dispute mediation." With that, Mrs. Yang, we'll conclude, and we're ready for your discussion.
Thank you, thank you for that presentation, Ms. Key. And I'm going to turn to my colleagues to see if there are any questions, or comments. Okay, yes, Ms. Sylvester?
Yeah, just a couple of technical things. On line thirty-two, foundational, well, you start with Montgomery County Board of Education affirms its core purpose, affirms its core purpose as preparing all students to thrive. Foundation to MCPS ability, should that be the board's ability?
Yes.
And on line one fifty-seven, that reads, there's something wrong there. Nurture employee well-being, skip the end, through individual and group support?
Yes.
And that's all.
I actually do not have questions, I have comments. Within, um, within our school system, I find the, um, professional development compared to other fields. We always say that we have, uh, less of a ladder for people to climb in career-wise for our, our staff. I know that Blueprint for Maryland's Future tried to address that with the National Board Certified, um, certification. But I'm still looking at our vast of our supporting, uh, supporting staffs, that the career leathers are very limited for them. So this is something for us as a system to consider, but I'm glad we have a professional development policy to follow, thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues? No, so with that, may I have a motion to move it to the board?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous with those present, all right? So moving right along to the information, um, the, do any of you have questions regarding the item of information or regulation approved by the superintendent's office since the committee's last meeting?
I did have a question about the regulation, um, COA RC responding to reportable offenses by students. Could you just give me a, an overview of the changes that were outlined there in one through five?
So this is a new regulation in response to Maryland law.
Yes.
And we needed to lay out, um, the, the state definition of what constitutes a reportable offense. So it is something that happens off school property and is not at a school-sponsored event. It wasn't at prom, it wasn't at an away game. We are required in that law to report, uh, so, I'm sorry. The law requires MSDE to report annually to the General Assembly, and we have to report information to MSDE. Let's see, require Maryland Public School Districts, right, so we have to report that information to MSDE. There was a clearly stated right in the Maryland law that if there is going to be a meeting to discuss the removal of a student from their regular program, the student's attorney, if they have an attorney, must be invited. We had previously stated that before we developed the reg in another one, but that's why we wanted to carve out, there were so many things specific that we carved out a special regulation. And then you'll see what we followed up with, with Regulation GEE, was to carve out what we had put there and just make sure everything was aligned.
Ms. Davis, actually, is it that for this, under Maryland law, we are reporting things happen? Those things are students, but it, the events happen off school campus and off school time. Am I understanding this correctly? This is a regulation to govern that?
We are not going to be reporting on every reportable offense that one of our students gets involved in. But when we need to respond, and we can follow up and check this out a little bit more, if you want to clarify your question a little bit more, I'd be happy to get back to you with a more complete answer. But something happens to a student, and it may impact school operations, and we have to figure out sometimes how we're going to respond. Can you, if you want me to follow up more, I would.
Yeah, so I, I, I try to get a, understand, I understand what you mentioned about school, about events happening on our property that's not our sponsor activity. Okay, I understand that part. But I'm trying, what I'm trying to understand, if it's our student, something happened outside, off-campus, what is our responsibility under this law? Are we being notified, do we need to report something, you know? So I would like to be clear on that.
So I can give you a more detailed response, but essentially, we're sometimes called not to communicate. not to communicate with the police department. If it's a student that's been detained, we need to communicate with that detention center, for example, DJS, coordinate educational services. So there's a, there's sort of a lot of steps that are involved with students that fall under the reportable offense law.
Okay. So that is, so they will not let us know when things happen to our students outside of school time and, and they have these interactions in the judicial system?
If they're aware that it's an MCPS student, we, we have a process by which our staff is notified so that we can follow up, particularly in the event that the student is detained.
Okay. And then does the state law MSDE require us to report this annually to the?
Um, if we're, if we have notice, yes.
Okay. Okay. Then I'm clear on that procedure. Okay.
I'm not clear, but it says here, "The updated KOMAR, Response to Concerns by the General Assembly About the Purported Misuse or Overuse of School Removals for Students Arrested for Reportable Offenses." Use or misuse of school removals. So what's the problem they're trying to solve?
The problem they're trying to solve is that a student being arrested for something is not a disposition about guilt, it is they've been arrested. There was a concern at the state level that just the information that a student had been arrested would mean that a student would be removed from their school program. And that is not legal in Maryland now. If you're going to, you cannot remove a student just based on the fact that they've been arrested. There is a process that has to be followed. And the, the state law and the state regulation are very specific to, of the steps that need to be followed. Um, you know, there are, the, the kinds of situations that have been discussed as we were working on the reg was, for example, um, some kids were involved in something and it could come back to school. And it, you know, is there a safety impact of that arrest on the functioning of the school system? And then there is a process that the state lays out for how that should be addressed.
So that is when we know, when the student return, we know that something has happened. Then we need to do this report. Okay.
Okay. I'll have to process it a little bit because the, the change is, is technical. I mean, are we all ready? We're, this is a, this is an update, it's not like it's a brand-new regulation, correct?
This is a new regulation for us.
Oh, it is.
It is a new regulation for us. It is a new state law for us. And there were things that had to be worked out. There had to be protocols worked out with law enforcement. I mean, it's one thing if it's, you know, the Rockville law enforcement, but it's another if it's, you know, DC or, you know, Howard County or something like that. The, the, what, what is a concern definitely is when the kids know about something before the principal knows about it, before our Office of Security and Compliance knows about it, because the information from law enforcement was not coming as, as, as we would have hoped. And so this law sets out that they need to comp, they need to report to us if they know the kid is one of our, I'm sorry, they know the student is an MCPS student.
Okay.
So there are, there are protocols that had to be worked out in the process of developing this regulation so that principals knew how to respond when they know that kids are coming to them with some information.
Right.
Parents are coming to them with some information, needs to be verified, you know? How should we follow up to get this information verified? So those are the kinds of things we wanted to make sure we had provisions for all of that.
It just says the COA RC was revised. That's why I was confused. You're saying it's a brand-new regulation, but this document says it was revised.
And I apologize for that. That's an error.
So, Ms. Davis, um, does this cover, for example, a student transferring to us from a different jurisdiction, a different school district? Does this cover that if that's, if that student has a record, that that record will come with the students to us when the student register for our schools? Or this does not cover that?
Not necessarily. There is not an obligation for a student to sort of self-report any past...
Okay. So that one is still, okay. Okay, it does make a, a difference. I think for, for us, it's always more information is, is better to help us to help the students and, and, and have support and services available.
The state legislature wanted to make sure that school systems weren't unnecessarily punitive towards students for actions outside of the school.
Of course.
But how does this help that?
Well, we certainly had to set forth, as Ms. Davis mentioned, a process for communicating with law enforcement, for getting teams together, various relevant members of the school team together to discuss safety concerns that may have arisen from actions outside of the school.
Okay. Okay. I mean, it doesn't really, it's not telling me how it's impacting getting kids expelled or not expelled from school, but I'm not seeing the full regulation, so I'm not, I'm just seeing your, your summary here, so.
Right. And it's a new process in terms of how we've been communicating with law enforcement, in terms of making sure we're addressing concerns and having, you know, clear communications between the school and law enforcement if relevant. I, so I think you can give some time for implementation and perhaps bring, you know, staff before you to give you an update on how the process is proceeding.
If a principal hears a student was arrested, or knows a student was arrested over the weekend and shows up on Monday, they're not going to suspend them. I mean, I just, I'm just having a hard time seeing how this communicating with police is changing how principals interact or discipline the, the student for behaviors outside of the school. If it, if it impacts the school, yes, I, I see.
That's exactly what, that's exactly what teams are trying to ensure is happening, that they look at potential impacts. And, and there are times when questions have been raised by community members, right? In, in certain smaller communities, you hear about things that have transpired in that community right away and then there are questions and allegations made and, you know, people are stirred. So there's, there needs to be that opportunity to gather the team together, to have that conversation, to make sure that the community knows that we're looking at it objectively and ensuring the safety of the students in the school.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate all the explanation. If I could get the full regulations, I could read that through. I just, I just want to understand.
So, Ms. Sylvester, Ms. Wolf, Mrs. Yang, let's maybe address the issue of process. What we had done in previous years that we changed at the direction of the committee, we had been bringing you at a policy management committee, the whole stack of regs. The way we are communicating that to you now is in the weekly updates from the superintendent. So for example, this regulation was signed by the superintendent on November 21st. So right about that week, you would have received the full regulation in the weekly superintendent's update. Now, a lot has happened since November. So it is, it is a question to you of how you would like us to talk about, well, we don't, you know, when we bring you an item of information like this to this committee meeting, would you like us to stick with the process we're doing now or would you like us to include in your packet the full regulation? And, you know, we don't need a decision now, but if you could give us some guidance on what you would prefer.
So, like you said, November to now is full three months and it's, it will be helpful to attach the link of the regulation.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt. I like the summaries.
Right. The summary is good, but in your materials, and even, because this is also public information to attach the link, the public don't, don't get the full pack, the, the weekly update, right, from the superintendent. So I think that will be helpful.
Okay. So a link but not paper copy?
Yeah. A link will be good. Thank you. All right? So that is our last item of business, all right? Any other comments, questions, concerns from committee members? Okay, so if that, without any, I don't see any hands, then I will move, I will move that the committee adjourned. Any objections to that? No? All right. Committee meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.